I'll let you keep going from there.
Okay. Well, I guess we can continue on with the appointing vice chair.
I'll make a motion to appoint Gene Hayden as vice chair. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of appointing Gene Hayden vice chair, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Take a vote on that, right? Aye.
Yeah. Opposed? Same with nay? Motion passes.
Congratulations, Gene.
I want to try something different this morning, especially considering last night's little fiasco on the football field. Everybody please stand with me for a moment. I'm going to start with a prayer this year, just this year. Any other years, do it if you choose, but we ask our heavenly father and or other spiritual sources from which you may draw strength. Please gather with us. We come together today asking for guidance, wisdom and support as we begin this first meeting of 2023. May our faith help us engage in kind, thoughtful and meaningful discussion. As the days pass this year, allow us to grow close as a group and nurture the bonds of community. Let our commitment to this land and the people of Crawford be devout and selfless. May our people be found, may, may our people be found worthy of many blessings and abundance as we come together as one caring, understanding and loving community. In your name we pray, amen. Okay. Called this meeting. And could we please review the agenda if there's any, any conflicts of interest, please say so. I assume Dave hasn't on. We've already taken care of the appointments. Could I have a reading of the minutes, Madam Auditor?
December twenty seven, twenty twenty two, the board of supervisors met at nine AM with Kyle Schultz chairman presiding. Members present were Rossburg vote Scoob, Hayden and Schultz. The board recognized and awarded the retirees Jerry Voe and Eric Scoob from the county supervisors and Denise Meves as county recorder. Ty Rossburg swore in Colin Johnson, county attorney Sarah Messick, county recorder Sheri Nedermeier, county treasurer, Kyle Schultz, Dave Mulbauer and Craig Dozark as county supervisors. Minutes of the previous meeting were read and approved. On motion, the board recognized claims for public health and approved claims for all other departments. The board approved the change of wage for Gene Von Tersch, maintenance employee one, engineers department at ten fifteen as advertised, a motion was made by vote, seconded by Hayden to open the public hearing regarding the vacating of streets in Kenwood. Motion was passed unanimously. There were no written objections. At ten sixteen, or ten twenty six AM, a motion was made by Hayden, seconded by vote to close the hearing. Motion passed unanimously. Discussion was made with the board from Jody Presswood via Zoom. She presented Elder Bridge's annual report. A discussion was made by the board about the land management agreement. More information needs to be provided. No action was taken at this time. Motion was made by Hayden, seconded by vote to approve the posting of the weed commissioner position. Motion passed unanimously. A discussion was made by the board about authorization letter to allow Tom Maydie, associated engineers to present the county, to represent the county on tower leases. Dwayne Zink mentioned that Verizon is in contact to redo of array for the courthouse tower. More information needs to be provided. No action was taken at this time. On motion duly seconded, the board adjourned at eleven oh two AM. Agendas for the next meeting are posted and available at the courthouse on Friday, four thirty PM proceeding in next meeting. The board took a road trip to the Manila shop following the meeting.
Are there any corrections to the minutes? Any corrections or additions?
Sounds okay to me.
But road trip the week before, wasn't it?
Oh, it was the week before.
Oh.
Oh, it must not have got erased. We'll get it erased from there.
Good catch, guys.
Thank you.
Yep. No, you're right. That was the week before.
Yeah.
Want me to sign that or wait?
Oh, I'm sorry. We'll edit this but with whiteout, but she'll have the form that goes to the newspaper. So we will draw a line through that. Yeah. So go ahead and sign it and we'll get that edited. Sorry about that.
Okay. Supervisors report.
Heard you hit the pledge.
Yep.
Yeah, you're early.
And the prayer.
They stopped it. They said we start at the end of the cash cup. It was actually scheduled for eight thirty, Dave.
Strike two.
Stock his wages.
First day. Hard to catch you when you start out behind. We were going to send out the cops for him, but then I helped you. Okay. Supervisors report. Gene, would you like to begin?
You know, normally I like to begin, but it was a real, it was a slower week than the week before Christmas, actually. There was very little, just got a phone call that they couldn't get ahold of the treasurer's office when the courthouse was closed. Other than that, called five times, nobody answered the phone. Other than that, I had no meetings, really a slow, slow week. So I didn't take very long.
Kyle, do you have anything?
I just have some correspondence from the Kenwood vacation of streets. On the map. Been working, we're trying to get the agreement, plan, agreement put together.
No, I spoke with Martha. She came over Friday, I think it was. It references conservation and pheasants forever. So I think she wanted to get some communication going with them too. So.
I'd seen that, but I figured with the holiday, they're not going to push it too hard.
Right. And we've got a little bit of time, so.
It really, it ain't that much of an emergency deal because we will get our first payment until.
Well, we've already received payments.
Have we?
Yeah. Yep. They come in October, CRP does.
Well.
And most of it does.
That would still have been covered under the current land agreement that we have. Because what's the role in all this into the new?
So we've gotten money for the new one. For the Stockholm.
Okay.
But.
All right.
So.
I assumed wrong then.
Yeah, we have gotten a little bit. There was a couple of partial payments because of the timing of the, the, the change of title and stuff, but yeah.
Okay, I guess I, my assumption was that that was from the past agreement.
Oh. Well, they aren't mentioned in our, yeah, so.
So that was something you were going to get.
Yeah, we need to do, but it's not like.
Given to them or?
Yes. The.
Isaac Walton, they just crossed the road.
They received that from Nelson, that's right.
Nelson.
Norilius.
Norilius.
Yeah.
Ike Sam, Pheasant River, whatever, bought it and then donated. And it's currently in CRP.
Correct.
Yep. Yeah, I think there's twelve acres and three tracts.
And the county also has the Airheart Red property with CRP and the county farm has some CRP ground. It's partially farmed.
The new piece wasn't on the, no, was it Kyle? That new piece of ground, weren't we talking about that for some?
Yeah, we have to get that put in there.
That's put in now though?
We're working on it, yes. Now we got Richmond's timber, dual timber. Where a pair sold their township. And we're building the parks. Kickoff. Trying to think if I get the math right, we're like seven hundred, eight hundred acres. Yeah.
Plenty of non-taxable property.
Yeah.
It's necessary stuff.
We're working on that, yes. On that, like I said, that's a slow week.
Well, it's getting in between Christmas and New Year's, that's a slow week.
Yeah, well, you know, a lot of people are on vacation. They just choose that as their vacation. Head off to, you know, the poor people that were on vacation with the weather, you know, most of them were stranded someplace with no luggage. So I just had a slow.
We do have, we are meeting tomorrow.
Yeah.
The city of Downson again in regards to the.
Com Center.
Com Center.
Tomorrow.
Three o'clock.
Yeah, and that's, I mean, I'm not going to be able to be there.
Thursday, we're meeting with Jack. At three by telephone.
Yeah.
In regard to what personnel trouble would be if we go through tuition, we take over Com Center. Trying to figure all that out.
Devils in the details.
Something dropped my attention that we need to discuss too, so I'll wait till we're done, we talk to him, I guess.
Okay.
Are you finished?
I think that's it now, yeah.
Okay, what we do every morning, right after we get through the initial starting, we have our supervisory report. That kind of replaced how you used to do it, if you remember. It's called supervisors reports, which is kind of consistent with what's listed in Robert's rule of order. So just to give reports on, on what you've, meetings you've had, you know, the meetings that we do or any other correspondence that's been brought to your attention. And I'm not ignoring you, but you know all this stuff pretty well.
That way we didn't have to go around twice and decide if it was old news or new news or correspondence. So remember last time we used to go around twice and you couldn't decide if it was old news or updates or so it just is easier to just give.
So we just do a report.
Right.
And some of us take up more than their fair share of time.
We're working on it.
Get a timer.
So we go quiet down a little. I think that was another jam.
Well, I'm just taking a beat in this morning.
So, okay.
Okay.
I did have, I was talking to Paul here just a little bit ago. We had somebody stuck on the highway by Buck Grove last night. Oh, I had a call from it and Paul's going to talk to us when he comes up here. And just a reminder for people out on the roads, Ray, not be on the road when it's like that condition, but like, you know, you're a truck. Somebody's maybe a reminder for our haulers that chains would be a good thing to have on hand and just trying to keep everybody safe.
And that's, that's a, a challenge. Most of these guys don't even want to carry chains. They ain't going to throw them on if they do carry them. But then if they're stuck, it's their own damn fault. So I actually drove around half of Missouri one, one day with chains on because of ice. And they just weren't sending trucks out. I had big, I was already loaded.
And he kind of, the truck driver last night kind of got caught. He was coming back from Skylar and was trying to beat it home. And you get in the hills by Buck Grove and he couldn't make it up. And then you're stuck on the highway and you can't get off the highway.
You know, now you're a hazard.
And if he was anywhere off or on a gravel road, he could have just, I wouldn't have picked him up. But it wasn't the case, so we had to send out a truck and Paul went out and they got him. Got him up off the highway and home, so.
Okay. Was it a local?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. Anything else? Okay, thank you. Ray did send an email this morning or yesterday, actually. They've got all the metal for the tower sites, other than Charter Oak, which is scheduled to receive its metal this week for the tower. And so, and then they'll put together the sections, which like at Manila and, and Vale had already been being done. I know that all the pieces were there at Dow City still laying on the ground. They had to put stuff together yet. But then, once that's accomplished, then the crane will show up. They said if you visit the sites while you're, while the they're working and the crane is there, please wear a hard hat and a vest, which Paul's got all that stuff if you don't have any of your own. Yeah, she's got a pink one. Anyway. So things are cooking along. And that's kind of good news, I guess. And for sure where we are with the rate part yet. I guess we need to see where they're at. And I know that it's, I'm pretty sure that Greg had said something to Tim. So hopefully that's going to start getting put together here pretty quick.
Mahaska County, which they wrote, they're online now minus their generators.
Mahaska?
Yeah. Ray Freeman Associates has worked on that project too, but they are online, don't have any generators.
Don't have generator yet. And it sounds like that's a pistol. And I suspect with the way the weather's been, everybody's buying the generators and the threat of. I did, I will bring this up, you know, I was at a deal where we were talking about electricity in these electric cars. If half the households in Dennison have one electric car, if we understood it, I don't think it was two, one electric car in half the house. We don't have enough electricity to keep the lights from burning out in Dennison.
Oh, no.
Now, granted, I don't see that happening as that fast in a town like Dennison, mind you, but that starts to tell you how stressed the grid could get. So we probably do need see about finding other ways to generate electricity or ain't got anything to do with us, mind you, but you know, I mean, as far as our towers and courthouses and, and I was asked in a meeting if we have what we have for a plan in the event, like to just say, did they turn into a real terrible ice storm? And we lost all kinds of power and power was going to be out for a week or two. What do we have to keep people warm and on? And I talked to Kyle a little bit about it and I, we think most all the fire stations have generators. I would guess.
Yeah, we have a generator.
We do here. I would assume that I don't know if community buildings or water, like Charter Oaks water treatment, I don't know that that has a generator. Yeah, but I don't even think they ever had a generator there, did they?
Does your fire hall have a generator? See, I think we did. I think something through Greg.
We've.
Facilitated, yeah.
After the whole nine, ten.
Yes.
Ice storms, we make sure every fire station.
It was a great opportunity or something.
Power there, yeah.
Because the courthouse is natural dancer for pain.
So I, I just think that this might be something that one of the, I'll, I'll probably speak with Greg about, maybe it's to see about making sure that the schools and then like community centers, see what kind of availability we have for grants out there or other projects to, to help facilitate things like that. I mean, the majority of people can probably get by for a short period of time that's, I mean, I remember that storm that we had ten, ten, twelve years ago, and I had a house full of people because they couldn't get back out to their place in the country, which with REC couldn't get out to fix power lines. So the community starts looking after itself. But if it's a large scale problem, we could all be in a little bit of trouble. So anyway, that might be something else to look into. And that was pretty much just in my week.
As far as you want, fire station, Charter Oak, about half.
And I know we've helped out with brownout situations for DMU. I think it was in the summer months when, you know, all the ACs were running. It was so blessed hot. Was it, it would spend within the last couple of years, I think.
Texas had their big.
We would run our generator.
Fire station was running their generator to help put some more back on.
I think we did it for nearly a good week or so.
I think you're right, yeah.
Maybe longer. I don't remember exactly.
And I think.
There's always room for improvement.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, we're not, as far as the county goes, we're not high and dry and.
I think our, the luncheon that we had for secondary road, I think only Eric was able to make it. I had a lunch and I had to speak at it. And I think the rest of us had places to be.
I was there too.
You were there?
Well.
Oh, yeah, it's Rotary, yeah. Yeah, and I think that kind of covers all of my stuff for last week, unless you want to hear about a young marine from Charter Oak area that get promoted. He's getting promoted, I think it's this week, master sergeant. Bill Keppi. Remember, I am. Young man that's done great things for himself. Okay. So that kind of covers the whole works. We've got a lot of time to eat up between now and.
One a year.
Mr. Osmond showing up. Half hour.
No, he's there at nine fifteen.
Is it nine? Oh, you're right, nine fifteen.
If we started at eight.
Long time to eat up. Two minutes.
Two minutes.
Good job.
Keeping her on track already.
Yeah. Well, I can't keep my, I can't get the supervisor's here all the time.
Sometimes we go, good luck with that.
Especially the new guy, he's.
Make sure it's a whole call, but every time it says resolution.
He drinks a lot of coffee.
Is there something there?
Well, if they come up with a new plan for coffee replacement.
Yeah.
Eric, you surprised, sorry, I'll point there because that's where Eric sat for a long time.
Take a picture of that plant right now. Eric was the one who would ever.
Oh, no, it needs a little haircut. I just said.
I tried to give it to him when he left, but he wouldn't take it.
Gold plant.
We take care of it. It's our water plant.
We should have that right before supervisor's report, water plant.
We'll get.
Water plant.
Always gave a call.
It needs that haircut. It gets those brown leaves every so often, so.
Everybody get to take a nice look at the pointy, our, our board appointments. See what we got. And you can try to reach out to them. Some of them will reach out to you.
Yeah. If you need help with that, just holler and we might have. Oh, go ahead. Oh, with your little tablets?
So we can start to get emails from our board of meetings.
Oh, yeah, you didn't get them yet.
I didn't get one until.
Is that yours?
I was going to stop down and talk to them.
So is, is it usual that they, these groups contact us or are we supposed to contact the group?
Well, the way it sounds, some of the groups aren't real good at contacting you, so you might want to contact them.
Fair board, that are tough ones.
I talked to Leonard already. Yeah, we weren't real good about letting Kyle know when the board meetings are.
Brian Broderston might be getting, staying in touch with.
Yeah.
Ling, only Mike, Leonard.
He lives just right.
You don't think. Brian doing a dinnymole?
Why did Brian attend? This is hard to get hold of.
I think it's kind of.
Contact information. Some of them I didn't even know existed.
And then we have a few things that we do that aren't on here, so.
Well, that LAS.
That are kind of for the county. Highway thirty coalition, I, I sit on that. And we, this last year, we actually gave, did we give five thousand to them? Oh, and they're, they're doing a big study on the economic and all the development, what, what, what it would do for our area. All the way along Highway thirty. Us and the city of Dennison and like Woodbury, or excuse me. Logan or Harrison and, you know, like Carroll County and Jefferson County, they're all, they all, Green County, Jefferson. They'll be like five thousand each to the project. And it was just short of a hundred thousand bucks to do this, but it should be very helpful and.
They came and solicited that, those funds from us.
Yeah. And so it's not really an official committee, but it's something that's going to help us out. So we're going to stay active, involved in it. Especially since we gave them money, I like to keep an eye on them.
Right.
See that they're working hard for all of us.
Swears kind of still the ringleader of that.
Who?
Adam Swears.
Yeah, yeah, sure is. And everything seems to be cooking along pretty good. Ray Gasser is a pretty good friend of mine and he's actually on the commission. So that should help out, hopefully. But.
I wondered why that was up there.
Well, there's a few things that we, that you can, you know, don't be afraid to look after the county and other ways that you see.
Here, West Central Community Action. Just reached out to you. You talk, they deliver.
Yeah.
You're good, okay.
I think that's a pretty busy little group there.
Yeah. You, you should ask for a book of all the, what do you call it? They've got so many acronyms. West Central Community Action. It takes about, I was on it for like my first three years or so, I don't think I ever got all the acronyms.
Typical.
Yeah, the whole, whole meeting and it's not really.
I was talking to.
Where do they meet at? Yep.
Because we got a big agenda.
Go out of town to the east on forty four. Feed mail or something on the south side of the road, on the north side.
Leonard, right there in Harlan.
Yeah, West Central Community Action on north side of the road on forty four.
I don't know what the hell that is.
I never saw Carsco.
Never did?
Every bar, every bar we went in, I looked and said, Carson behaving himself and.
No, never seen him in person.
Steven Conido.
Yeah, your cousin Paul, make sure you call him Steve. Don't see him again.
Call Paul Steve?
No, Paul told me to call you that. Yeah.
Stan.
Stan, there, Stan, there you go.
Stan, there you go.
I was sitting here doing a little cleanup the other Friday night, about five thirty and the phone rings. Are you still at the courthouse? Yep. Come over to just one more. On the, if you ever sat down with Steve Oatman, that guy is a stitch. Holy crap.
Oh, wow.
They seen, they seen the light on up during my pickup out on the street. So they said, come on, I didn't come over right away. Just one more. And they're going to have fifty five, so you gotta watch out.
I don't know much.
I just sent him a text. Maybe I'll call them. I was trying to dinner up our discussion.
We got to stay on track.
We do.
You're at nine fifteen. Okay, I'm going to smash yours and Dave's fingers here before the day's over. All right, see, I'll bet.
And we send those out. That's very helpful.
Yeah.
This morning, they showed up five minutes late. Well, Joey said you can hardly get out of your car, you're falling on your ass.
I would just assume that he might be on the phone dealing with the road.
Right. Chris said his car wouldn't start, so.
Looks pretty.
Then I get out to landfill.
Inch and a half of rain.
Were they open? They were there, but they're moving snows or ice, ice cream ice, so.
Branches.
Had to call Travis and say.
A mess.
Jerry would be busy.
Jerry will be.
Nobody was in.
They don't get.
Somebody has to drive the side by side or the trailer back so he can put it in with the trailer.
I like his plan.
Teamwork.
There you go.
I just want somebody to.
A good thing we lifted the burn van. There might be a few trees.
Just yesterday, we needed one. You know, in two calls, one. And then his sister is the manager, trying, was wrestling, she goes, and then from there I go to a seven year old, so.
Notice a public hearing. Motion to improve notice.
Most likely candidate lives in Colorado, so.
A little bit of a drive.
Get to be eighteen years old.
The city of Kenwood.
Down that little corner.
Yep.
Craig, are you going to MCO school?
Yes.
Anyone else going to?
That's the eighteen.
I wanted to, but I got other distractions.
Or not, next week, two weeks.
I always learn a lot.
Yeah, next week our budget meeting.
Ten and eleven.
Ten, ten and eleven.
Good. Priority.
Yeah, so just one more.
How did you do with your budget to get it done?
Yep.
Awesome, did you turn it into Michelle?
Nope.
Okay.
Welcome, welcome.
My apologies. Well, we're just sitting here looking, well, somebody.
Don't worry, Paul, I wrote nice first, I was the first one late.
Way to start this.
Oh, well.
Yeah, yeah.
You got a few things up here, so.
Yeah, I do.
Well, Mr. Engineer, he has the floor.
I'll try to catch you back up, sorry about that.
Please do.
Okay, well, first thing is the roads, ice, so. We had the guys out, we had semi that we got off the road last night about eleven, ten thirty, eleven o'clock, so I've been up since, went to bed at eleven and got it before.
Oh, boy.
So. Uh, but anyhow, so Dave and I talked about that this morning, he was down on Buck Road pavement just off of Highway fifty nine, sorry, I'm low on breath. I went over to get a cup of coffee. But anyhow, so. You know, as we've talked before, and this would be new for Craig and for Dave, not necessarily for Dave, but for Craig. You know, if it's an emergency, we always go out. If the roads are just icy at night, we, we don't. So last night I got the phone call and, you know, was it? Technically, you know, no one, no one's life was in peril, we had a semi sitting on the highway. Just west of Highway fifty nine, and so I thought, well, we better get him off of there, because if a car comes.
He won't.
Sliced into it, he won't be able to get stopped, so.
So who contacts you? I mean, does, does the sheriff department contact?
Nor, normally, last night it was the trucker.
The trucker?
Yeah, yeah. But normally the call would go to the comm center, and then the comm center would, would give me a call, and we'd talk about the situation and, you know, make a decision whether it constitutes an emergency. You know, if law enforcement calls and say, hey, you know, there's an emergency out here, we, we, we need to get.
It's a safety issue.
Yeah, so anyhow. So we went out there, but like I was telling Dave this morning, I said, you know, these truckers really need to have chains, and so that's what we were maybe talking to Dan about. Putting an article in the newspaper about, you know, just saying, hey, if you are going to travel, if you have to travel. You know, it, it would be a, a lot better for us if they could just have a set of chains, if you throw a set of chains on, you'd be fine. You know, once he got stopped, because what happened is he was, he was a, he was pulling a trailer. And he just didn't get enough momentum to get up the next hill, so there he sat, you know, he was between two hills and he couldn't go anywhere, and so he's sitting on the highway, of course, the Buck Road pavements, there's no shoulder, it's paved now, so he had really no place to go. But anyhow, if they had chains, he could have got out, he could have thrown that chain on, I think got out.
The problem is a lot of them don't carry, don't carry chain, now, some of your livestock guys do because they get out on the roads. Hell, there's people that won't even go to the mountains this time of the year because they aren't on chains, and you know, you get out to, you get out to Colorado, it's fifteen hundred dollar fine this time of the year if you don't have them, and it's like a damn near three, man, if you're up in the mountains during the chain law without.
Yeah, you know, and so, so what happened in the interim from the time he called me till the time we got out there is sure enough, here's a young lady in a Jeep. Who comes down the highway and sees him and can't stop, and starts sliding, doesn't hit him, but that's why we go out. You know, it was kind of a situation where it could have gotten, you know, and then if you have another car, then the next thing you know, you got a whole bunch of cars out there, so we went out and got him off the road, but just, you know, to kind of share with you. You know, how the, the, the thought process that goes on when you, you know, when you get situations like that and ways to avoid that is first of all, people could just stay off the roads, but they can't, we get that. But if they could be better prepared for it, and in his particular case, I think he left from Nebraska, he was coming this way, the roads were pretty good, he got on our road, which wasn't good, and there he sat.
So what did you go out there with? Pardon? What did you go out there with?
We took a single axle sand truck out and sanded the road to Highway fifty nine and then threw a bunch of sand out to get them, to get them off the road, so.
And I did it, you know, just.
As soon as he got traction, he was able to go.
Dan, just for, if you're going to put something in the paper about that, here's what I tell all my guys, if you're in a situation like that, a lot of the counties don't run trucks during the night. Uh, just avoid the, the local highways, stay on the state highways or higher, state or federal highways, because they do cruise out unless it's completely hazardous.
And, and if, you know, if they do have to, like, it's like feed trucks and stuff, you know, they should change.
Thank you, Jake.
Yeah, they should carry chains and, and, you know, so, and then the guys were out this morning, I mean, I've seen it worse than it, than it is right now, seen a lot worse than this, but it is like out there.
It's almost rotten, for rotten ice.
It was, yeah, it didn't take much to get it to break, so.
You got a lot to do.
So the contract projects, those are both set for letting dates and we'll, we'll see where we land on those, hopefully we have good news. The guys did spot some loads under item three there, structure, project, day labor project work. They spot, we're spotting some limestone last week, the roads got a little sloppy, you know, after that deep freeze and then it started to, uh, want to get up into the forties. And so we're spotting a few loads out there, but we try not to do a whole lot of that this time of the year, just because you get ten inches of wet snow and then you're pushing it all back, so. Other than that, just doing service workshop fabrication and, you know. I'll be honest with you, I mean, it's a tough time of the year, you like to keep everybody busy, but, you know, blades, blades can't be out today, there's not much they can do. You know, so we do what we do to, to kind of get through it.
We just go out and throw salt on the bridges, sand and salt on the bridges and at the intersections on, on a day like this?
No, we treated everything.
Treated the whole thing?
Everything, yeah, I mean, it was slick, yeah.
Washes off with that dang rain so fast, doesn't it?
I know, I know, what do you do?
Damn, did you do that?
Yeah, yeah, so.
Cause I was on Botna Highway before it got sanding and it was everything it took to get to one forty one, and then I followed one of our trucks from Askelon North, it was night and day difference.
Yeah.
You know, just where they've been and not been.
Because of that temperature was just right, and as soon as you put the mix down, you had grit and it started working right away, I mean, the mix works great at thirty degrees. So, I mean, it, it just does.
That's the worst time, I, I can deal with stones, ice.
It's bad, yeah, and it was slick.
You know, here it would be and then there it would be, I think that's what we're hearing too, that.
Yeah, yeah, so, and that's what's really dangerous.
That's where.
Cause if you're driving down the road, and then I was going home last night, I was driving back up to the house and this car is going down Highway thirty nine, and I see, I watch cars go on thirty nine all the time, and they were just flying. I mean, clearly going faster than the speed limit, I'm looking over there thinking.
What? Yeah.
There's a report of a fatality, I don't know why.
Slide into the right.
Yeah, but anyhow, so, okay, item four is the. Public hearing for some excess right of way, and I just, I got an aerial here, so. This property here, okay, I don't know how familiar you are with the area north of Dow City, Garrick's, they have a big shop building and grain facility here and some livestock over here. And they're selling this area right in here to Mike Wind Grove, and anyhow, so when this road was originally graded in the seventies. They acquired these little triangular pieces over here right of way. Okay, so that, that piece right there is, is our right of way, we're appointed to it. And. I'm not sure why they did that, because it happens, there's more areas like this on, on here, and we just, we've never gone to work cleaning it up, just because you have to create a legal description for it, you have to do a public, you know, have to do all that stuff and. And, but in this particular case, it makes sense to vacate that, okay, and actually it would on all of them if we wanted to, to go that direction, but. So, so wherever these curves are at, they bought. The whole corner, basically the whole intersection, and so that's still public right of way. So they want to build a building there, and buy this, build a building there, it's an ag, feed, seed, dealer type, type facility for this gentleman. And so he wanted to know whether we'd vacate the right way, so I was giving the reason why we wouldn't.
Obviously they did that because if they ever wanted to straighten the road, they'd have the room to do it.
Well, the road was, you know, the intersection was, you know, there were, the old roads came at a P intersection as opposed to that curve. There was a tiny, that's still, still in effect, they call, what they call is an uneconomical remnant of property after you buy right of way, but that really wouldn't be an uneconomic remnant because it ties in with everything, so I really don't know why that was done the way it was. And, and or why, when the road and everything was done, they didn't vacate that. So.
But they've been farming it.
I hate to state as an ad nauseam, to be honest with you, I mean, we might have a few like that in the county, but you look at some of the state fence line, you know, the fence lines are, you know, there's, there's no rules of sixty six out there in a lot of cases, they're huge.
Yeah.
And some are probably made a bit like South on fifty nine, but you look going north of town or coming up on fifty nine, like where the, up on Polly's ground, how far the fence line is from the ditch.
And sometimes they did that because they needed to borrow area, you know, they needed to go back and they needed to get dirt, and so they just bought the land.
Okay.
And then took the, you know, and then took the dirt off of it.
Gotcha.
Um, and so that's why they did that. Now, the difference between state right of way and our right of way is the state owns it, they have title to it.
They own that.
They have a deed, ours, we just have an easement.
Yeah.
I can almost imagine that, some slivers like that, we go back, the landowner was probably about on the east side of the road at that time, and the west side was owned by somebody else, and now it's all under the same ownership, so.
Yeah, see, this, I think, was owned by Clark, and this was owned by Garrick, I remember Gene telling me one time, he says, well, they've been farming that little corner of ours for years, what should I do? I said, well. Probably nothing by the farm, and so, and I think that's what they ended up doing.
So.
So, that could very well be maybe the same thing here, this was probably all with this forty over here.
It was, it was a part of it, yeah.
And so they probably bought it and said, yeah, it is an uneconomical remnant, but today, this is the way it's harmed, the way it's owned, so.
Let's get it cleaned up.
But anyhow, so, in this particular case, the surveyor's doing the survey, so I said, you generate me a plat and a description and we'll vacate it, you know, so this is kind of the more complicated part is going out and doing all that survey work, that's why we just haven't really done much with them. You know, you get, you got to get all this work done, he's already done that because he's got to do it for their plat, so we'll have the, a detailed legal description area so that when we get it to Mary, in the court's office, they'll be able to take care of that, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I make motion to approve item number four, with the date, you want to set a date on that motion?
I think so. Paul, did you have a date?
I've got a date of the twenty fourth of January, ten oh five. And the reason I set that at ten oh five is we've got another one over here, I'm going to do it ten o'clock on the same day.
Ten oh five on the twenty fourth.
A second to that motion?
Okay, there's been a move and, or motion and a second. For a notice to public hearing and publication thereof related to vacation of a portion of access the right of way located near intersection of P Avenue and Kenwood Road, set for the twenty fourth of January at ten oh five, we have any further discussion? Hearing none, this is not a resolution, so, hearing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Eyes have it. Motion carries.
Okay, the next item is that three hundred street that we, we graded and, and converted to a level eight road by Cam Lane, it's down there, right off the highway. And so he's come in and we've settled up, he paid the balance of it, so, worked out really well, and just as a kind of a side note, I mean, we paid for the fence damages. We didn't pay, we only paid for like a small portion of about five, five, five damage, so basically. Really well with us on that project, and I think it worked well for him too, but he paid just, just shy of twenty five thousand dollars for the aggregate servicing.
Everybody's happy.
Everybody's happy, and that turned out, turned out really good, so. At ten o'clock, because I don't think, I don't think that'll take more than five minutes.
Public hearing to be held on January twenty fourth, twenty twenty three at ten AM.
Ten AM.
Ten AM.
Second. Twenty fourth, that's been moved and seconded. Do you get that, Madam Auditor?
Got it, thank you.
And ten AM?
So, is that, is that okay, just for discussion, I mean, it only allows us five minutes between public hearings, but this should be. Yeah, well, I don't think it'll take long at all, so.
It's probably better to have it shortened, go long if we need to. All right, public notice, or notice for public hearing and publication thereof related to the reclassification of section three hundred street extended from Highway one forty one, south one mile, the intersection with W Avenue. From the service, from service, from Area Service B roadway to Area Service A roadway, this will be on the twenty fourth of January. At ten AM. We have a motion and a second, do we, do we have any further discussion?
Question.
All the question, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no.
Okay, next item is engineering services agreement with Kevin Burns, and this is for. Right, right here on eighty fifty five, just.
No problem.
So. So, this bridge on Health Fifty One. Okay, and we've got them also working on, Kevin Burns working on a design for a replacement of this bridge, ninety sixteen, which hopefully will be a box called. And so. So this is hopefully going to be ready, that's what we're shooting for, for a year from now, January twenty twenty four, let it. And this bridge over here, I'd like to do at the same time, and the reason is I'm pretty sure we're going to get city bridge money for this. Which means they'll pay almost a hundred percent of the cost of that bridge, it won't come out of our bridge fund, if it had to come out of our bridge fund, there's no way to fund it.
The city have to put in, or you put in for that?
The city already sent the ladders, we've got it in the list, and so I'm probably going to have a posting put up there in the spring, so that when the next mall cycle comes and they do the scoring, it'll score, and it'll get funded.
Get good scoring?
Yeah, gotcha, okay, but we have to get the design ready, I'm kind of, I'm kind of moving the pawns on the chess table, in hopes that this all kind of converges that, you know, the funding comes in the fall of this year, and we can let it in January, okay? So, if not, maybe I have to skip a year, however, I don't want to see the Donna Reed Bridge and that bridge out in the same year. So that's why I'm trying to kind of push this along, thinking, okay, let's do this in twenty twenty four, let's do this in twenty twenty four, you know, we do the survey, there's just things here that's better, so we'll do the survey on this, we'll do a lot of the permitting, archeological, submittals, new species, all these other things to help put the plans together for us on this, so. So this is the preliminary plans, and then we'll have another, final plans, but we got to keep all rolling on a lot of these things in order to kind of realize those funds as they, as they become available, so.
So if those funds don't become available, will that get pushed off?
Well, the thing is right now, Ty, they, they put more money into that fund, because the guy, Jay, puts, so there's more money in the city fund, so that the, the scores are, you know, it's easier to get a bridge in there than it used to be. Because they're dispersing more of it, getting more of those really bad bridges, and this bridge needs to be replaced, Dex and Bash, you know, that bridge, and it's kind of like this bridge over here, you know, is it going to fall in? And it's kind of like this bridge over here, you know, is it going to fall in for the next few years? No. But we need to start picking those paved road bridges off and get them replaced. So we, you know, we we're good for another seventy five or hundred years. So Paul, why is it called qualify as a city? Because that bridge is, the one thing, the one in my mind, it's actually not in the city limits of bail. It is.
Oh, it is.
So what it is is, and this is where, you know, over time, we're kind of starting to kind of grasp what is. It's in the city limits, so qualifies for city bridge money, but it's on our farm to market road. And since Vale is less than five hundred, we're responsible for that that road. Okay, so the difference here between this and this one, in innocence, that's in the city limits as well. The denisans more than five hundred in the population, so that one's technically all denisans. But there's certainly some compelling reasons for us to be involved in that because of how important Donna Reed is to to all of this traffic.
So that would bore, we don't need an agreement like we have with city.
No. We're a hundred percent, we're a hundred percent. We're a hundred percent charged back. Yeah, that makes sense because of the population. So now the other bridge, the trust that they're also, they did get city bridge money for that.
Did they?
On this gravel road that leads to the west and then south.
To the brewery.
And that's a hundred percent theirs. So we all, you know, I mean, maybe provide some guidance here or there.
They are getting some money though.
Are they hiring someone?
They are. Not sure where they're going with that project, I just assume that's.
Really?
With that said, though, are they still taking the offer of what we presented with our. Temporary bridge.
Problem with the DOT temporary bridge is that it doesn't meet the P H L ninety three standard. That they would have to meet and remit those funds. Yeah, now I've talked to the consultant about, you know, is there any way you can stiffen that up? But I'm going to leave that up to them. I'm staying out of that.
I was just curious about that. That doesn't make something available for us or something in other place.
Exactly, exactly. I'm not too worried about where that goes, but but it'll be the city's decision. So. So twenty twenty four, hopefully, bridge year and hopefully a bridge year. Okay, two good bridges to get off the base system or get get approved. And then we're also working on the design right now and should get this complete. I want to get this done. Even though it's a twenty twenty six project.
For the overlay.
Yeah, and the shoulder paving, just like butt grow, all of this. Is that. So remember, we talked about the local program, we're trying to get that updated and there's this they call SS four A, safety for all.
Yeah, that's where we're going to put the zippers on everything.
So. Yeah, yeah, anyhow. So so collectively, the counties, except for one, I had a nice visit with Tim at the conference. Have decided and opted to work with this company that did, the consulting firm that did all the. Let's back it, okay, for four or five years ago. They they started doing these local road safety programs, okay, and there's like forty seven counties, I think, that actually got them completed for one of those. And we've done almost everything in there, identified Donna Reed Road, identified Butt Grove Pavement. And we've done a lot of the things that are in there except for this, okay. So what that was done is it's kind of like, you know, when a kid asks you for money for college, what are you using it for? How are you using this? So that's what that was done for, it was kind of to give to the to the to the funding or agencies. Here, here's, here's what we're going to do and it's all been reviewed independently. And so so now they're coming out with this SS four A and they wanted collectively to, you know, so the county wouldn't have to pay to get their plan upgraded. And I don't think ours would cost that much to get upgraded, so I called this Kimberly Horn, of course, nobody worked over the holidays. You know, they're all gone. And and so I'm trying to get get in touch with them and find out what would it cost if we just did it on our own? Can't be more than a couple thousand dollars. We've done everything and I've given them, given them all the information, everything we've done. And this is a big project, you know, I'm not going to sit around and wait for like we did with the bridges where we collectively submit. We're just going to submit on our own for a seven million dollar open project. And see what happens. That's what I'd like to do. So so we have to get our safety plan upgraded. And then I think we just figure out how to put that grant application together. Maybe get some assistance from Region twelve or whatever and throw in our own application. Because I don't want to have to wait and, you know, the collective group of counties kind of assess which project is the best and this and that. And we just submit one our own, that's what Calhoun, Alton County basically did like for fifty two million dollars worth of stuff. He said.
Three mile stretch down here, are we still working on that?
Yeah, but see, that that doesn't fall into the safety category. Okay, so here's where, here's my angle here. I want to try to get other money for this, okay, because if we get all of this paid for with the SS four A or even seventy five or even fifty percent. Well, that opens the door up for all those funds, because that's, I mean, seven, six to seven million dollars of our funds, that's a lot.
Yeah.
That's a big chunk of money.
What's our, what do you think your chances is having Region twelve help you?
Oh, I think.
I mean, what what is your chances with them helping?
With them helping? I don't know. I really don't. I don't know enough.
What you're batting at.
Well, I got a green, I got a. Pig on my shelf downstairs. So. I think there's a shot and there's a lot of money out there, these discretionary grant dollars that are out there. And and so I think this is worth a shot and and really. We have a history of demonstrating that we follow our plan, that we're trying to complete our plan. And this would be kind of one of the last bigger projects that would would help out there, so we're we're in a historically disadvantaged area. There, there's a lot of things, I think, that will point towards us perhaps getting that money. One off, and I heard this several times at the conference, the bridge project here. Checks a lot more boxes than most other projects that were included in that.
Call his question.
Yeah, I just wanted to do that, I just, if you're going to do that. I mean, that still leaves that seven miles from one forty one to eighteen sixteen, do we get greedy and try to put that all on my project?
We could.
If we're going to ask for seventy five percent of somebody else's money.
Yeah, great, we can pay the shoulders.
Yeah.
We wouldn't have to resurface the whole thing, we could just pay the shoulders. Because that's what they're looking, they're looking.
That's probably.
SS four A, it's S S four, the number four, A, save streets for all. And so that's what, that's what the focus is. So so, you know, so we can't necessarily use it for a new.
You know, that's the only road that connects Ricketts, so that should help with that too.
Yeah, that would take care of the last.
Ballpark here, what's it run a mile to resurface?
We get to, it's probably going to be close to a half million dollars a mile.
And if you had to do, if you got to do the three mile stretch without anything being, you know, just being gravel road, what would that be?
Uh, to pay this, it's already graded.
Yeah.
That's probably going to be, so the last time we did it was about seven, seven hundred and twenty sixteen. So it's probably going to be closer to a million, yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's a nice stretch right there.
Yeah. So anyhow, kind of digress there a little.
I move to approve item number six.
Second. It has been motion and second to approve the engineering services agreement with Calhoun Burns and Associates. For engineering service related to the design of M fifty five bridge replacement over the East Boyer River near Vale. If we have any further discussion?
The the amount is nineteen thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars.
Nineteen thousand, say that again.
Nineteen thousand nine hundred and thirty.
Nine thirty.
And we're just going to pay that out of local money.
Okay. Any other further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, vote by saying aye. Oppose, no. Motion approved. Do you get all that?
I believe so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, we're finally closing out the HMA project from twenty twenty one, so it's twenty twenty three, January third.
Awesome.
Not any fault of ours, I, you know, it just takes time. Communication with the contractor, we didn't wrap things up till the spring of twenty twenty two and then just working through all the details with them, so. So we've got the final pay estimate, this is the only one that the board needs to actually approve and sign, so you'll have to let sign this time. And the original bid was nine million three hundred and thirty five thousand. Uh, the final came in at nine million one hundred and ninety seven thousand.
One ninety seven?
So a nice project. Three thousand.
Was it any of that, was that just due to?
Shoulder material that we didn't use.
Okay, it wasn't some HMA that we didn't put, you know, that. Anything due to the delay of the green, that green crossing, was there any of that? Did we penalize them to an extent where?
Four working days, ten thousand dollars is what we negotiated.
So it wasn't, you know, they didn't make up that.
Yeah.
Just material not used.
And they were really good about it. I mean, we could have probably been taken a hard position on that. Their crews were there working all the time. That, this is, in my opinion, was more of a management issue in terms of not getting that done. It was the people that were out there doing the work every day and they worked every day for the five months that they were here and then all of a sudden they had to pull out. Because they didn't have the river agreements all in place and then they come back in the spring, work three days and work. So I thought that was probably fair enough. The bridge project that we have, you know, we had twenty four working days on that, but I just don't feel right about assessing them working days either. Uh, so we're trying to work through all that. I mean, don't you, are you guys in my camp? I mean, you know. I just, I just don't feel, I just don't feel feel in this environment that we're in to penalize that. I think it'll pay us dividends down the road if you work with these people.
Considering that some places, the people aren't getting bids to get stuff done.
That's right. If you, if you, if they know that they have a good working relationship and they can work with people, I think they're more inclined to better projects and better competitively, so. So anyhow.
Mr. Schultz, did you make the?
My motion to approve number six.
Seven. It's been moved and seconded for motion to for the final payment estimate for HMA resurfacing contract twenty four. C zero two four one two six with a, oh my God, Midwest, OMG Midwest. Final. The doing businesses Des Moines asphalt paving. Um, and then final estimate or the final dollar amount is nine million one hundred and ninety seven dollars.
Nineteen thousand nine hundred and thirty, wait, nevermind.
It's one, it's nine million one hundred and ninety six thousand nine hundred dollars and ninety six cents.
She'll need that for the minutes.
Right, there you go.
You got that and ninety six then? Okay, so it's nine million one hundred and ninety six dollars and nine hundred and ninety six thousand nine hundred dollars and ninety six cents. All in, deserve any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay.
Yeah, thirty two miles, hundred and ten thousand.
You're going to fill in the name, I assume?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so next Wednesday, you're all invited to come if you want. We're going to have a motor grader workshop down here at the shop at ten thirty. So I do these every so often and I think with the fact that we got a lot of new people and some new new motor graders. It's good to get everybody together, we'll bring all the operators in, foreman, mechanics. And we just talk about, and then we have Sigler, their, Brent will be there. Um, their customer service rep will be there and then there's a, there's a gentleman that does walkarounds on all new equipment, talks about the features, the. Capabilities and the equipment, so he'll be there. And then I'm having this Brian Jackson with Jackson Heavy Equipment come over from Nebraska. And he's started up a company where he goes around and he he provides training to operators. Whether you know, motor graders, dozers, excavators, whatever it is, he's heavy equipment training operator, training company. And so he's going to come over, meet with our guys, meet with the foreman and talk about coming next summer and doing a motor grader workshop. And so we do it, we split the county up into, you know, east side, west side and then have him go out. And he has modules, different modules that go through like working in intersection, pulling in edges, reshaping roads. And so he's, he's done some work in the state already and he sounds like it's something that's pretty beneficial, so. So we're going to, we're going to give that a shot. It costs fifteen hundred dollars a day to have him here, but I think it's probably worth.
Save that much in phone calls to us.
Yeah, well, we're just getting everybody on the same page, you know, and I think the biggest thing I see, they just continue, continue, continue. Kyle and I went out and drove around and looked at some roads, just pulling the edges in, you know, we got a four hundred and forty thousand dollar machine. We just drop the blade and make the roads smooth. That isn't really what we're after. We have to, we have to be bleeding. I have to be pulling those edges in constantly working the runway so we don't have puddles of water sitting around and we don't have ditches.
Can't they coordinate like with with roadside crew, hey, I'm going to go rework this road, go mow them ditches for me, please? I mean, see, they do things like that.
Always out there, okay, and I even tell them the mower tractors are sitting there, you know, and some will and some won't, you know. You just, you got to try and motivate.
I think it's a good idea.
So, so, oh yeah, he'll be probably here three or four days. Yeah, because we'll do a classroom and then we'll do, you know, he says, however many modules you want to go through. I said, I don't know, I think we'll just kind of do one or two on each side, focus on edge rut and see where we go. He's here to, he's here on the eleventh just to talk with everybody about what he offers and what would we, what we would expect. Yeah, really, I was with him at the conference or two. Seem like you, you know, I I've never ran a motor grader. I can't tell my guys how to run a motor grader. I can tell them what I want it to look like once it's done, but I've never been in one. So you have to have somebody who knows what they're doing to tell them. So we got that going on and then. This week, I've got this Jason Fisher, that'll be Thursday. He's coming, he's, he's with the DOT, he gave presentation to conference too. You, I don't know, maybe you're probably aware of CDL requirement or guidelines for getting a CDL changed quite recently. They, in some ways they have, in some ways they haven't. So if we break the CDL licensing into basically three components. We've always done those three components. You study the guide, you come in and you take the test, you get a permit, okay? You get the permit, you go practice driving and then you study to, you have to do your pre-trip and your and your driving. Okay, and so now you still come in, you study, you take the test, you get your permit. Now you have to have a licensed trainer, okay, oversee the theory training. Okay, which will be your pre-trip stuff. And there are certain modules or certain things that you have to cover. So the DOT has set up their own program. They do all of this in-house. They they have a licensed trainer to do that and it's not that hard to do. A licensed trainer has to have a CDL for two years without any violations. Well, so, so if you think about it, in the past, okay, person got their permit, they came down and they studied the books more. And they worked with Andy or whoever down there and they walked around the truck and they talked about the different things that the free trip would do, okay? So now you're going to have to have a curriculum set up, which is not that hard. I was work with some company, what I'm getting at here is I'd like to have us just have that capability. So if someone comes to us without a CDL, we can work with them together.
You have your own trainers while you're going.
Yes, exactly, so, so once we get the curriculum set up, which you just have these modules and then they sit there. Everyone would be different. One guy might have to sit there for three days and go through because you have to pass each module. The next guy might knock it out in a day and a half. Okay, so there's not a set time, you have to go to a class, you just have to make sure that you you studied. And you you can pass these different components of being ready to do the CDL test. And then you have to have the behind the wheel trainer, that has to be a certified trainer as well. And that person then signs off saying, this person now is ready to take their CDL test. So, so the same process, just it's just a little different. I have to have a certified trainer. So I've talked to Tim, Barry, who I think I'm going to be able to get talked into being our certified trainer. And once he gets certified, he'll be around for a while, we'll have a certified trainer. It's not really going to cost us a whole lot to do this and this gentleman with the DOT, he helped set up their program, so he's going to come and talk to us. So he's gonna come and talk to us about setting up the program here. Not that we're gonna be hiring a whole lot of people in the near future, but it's just nice to have that all set up and ready to go. So.
Sounds good.
Sounds good. Kinda work, of course.
Thanks, Paul.
Yep. And my apologies. Let that happen again.
First day of the year.
Yep.
I'm gonna buy one. I'm, I gotta bullwhip it home. I'm bringing it in. Okay. This, here's our nine forty-five. Got an hour to do it. Discuss and take action. Approve the official newspaper resolution.
I make that motion to approve that resolution of the official newspapers.
I did look at it over. Same as the last three.
Yep. Three, Observer, the Mano Times and the Dallas Sun will turn our view.
Okay. Been.
Do that.
Okay. Jean. Or excuse me, Kyle and then.
Jean's dream writing again.
And Hayden seconds. It's a resolution, correct? Yes. The roll call vote. Supervisor Hayden?
Aye.
Supervisor Dozart?
Aye.
Supervisor Mulbar?
Aye.
Supervisor Schultz?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion approved. Uh, approve the board committee's appointments. Uh, everybody's had a chance to look over the appointments. Is there any conflicts that you see? Or is everybody content to start out with those?
We need to add, um, your report for the, uh, the, what do they call it, LAS for?
LAC.
LAC. Did we need to add that to our official?
You think we need to add until we get it official or?
I think you need to wait on that.
Wait, okay.
Until you have a board that you can assign, otherwise you're signing nothing right now.
Yeah.
It was written on my.
We don't have anything to assign.
Alright, no worries.
There's a lot of work to be done there yet.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I salute to the approval of the board appointments.
Okay.
As presented.
As presented. Do we have a second?
Second.
Dozart, Mr. Dozart, second. All those in favors and appointments, so it, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay? Motion. Approval resolution to pay claims prior to audit. And moved and seconded. Any further discussion? So once again, it's a resolution. Mr. Mulbar?
Aye.
Ms. Hayden?
Aye.
Mr. Schultz?
Aye.
Mr. Dozart?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Resolution naming depositories. That was also in there.
Yep.
Everybody had a look.
I'll make the motion.
Second. Ms. Hayden makes the motion.
Did you all notice there's an, another, there's an additional from last year?
Yes, yes, I did. Thank you, Mrs. Madam Auditor. And moved and seconded by Mr. Second was by Mr. Mulbar. It's a resolution once again. Mr. Mulbar?
Aye.
Ms. Hayden?
Aye.
Mr. Dozart?
Aye.
Mr. Schultz?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Signature authorization for CEO exchange for Region Twelve. That would be. You picked up Region Twelve? Okay.
No.
No, this, I got the committee.
You got the committee. This makes the chairperson, chairman.
Oh, makes me? Okay, CEO G. Alright, gotcha.
I'll make that motion.
Motion's been made by Ms. Hayden, seconded by Mr. Dozart. Any further discussion? None? All those in. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no? Resolution regarding the necessity for economic efforts and approving and promotion of such efforts.
This basically says that we give these funds to help promote economic development.
Correct. Which we will actually have a, someone coming in later today to discuss that very issue.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Mulbar, seconded by Ms. Hayden. Adam Hayden. All those, any further discussion? None?
Resolution.
It's a resolution? Yeah. Mr. Schultz?
Aye.
Mr. Dozart?
Aye.
Mr. Mulbar?
Aye.
Adam Hayden?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Resolution authorizing county engineer to execute certificates from farm-to-market projects in, for Crawford County.
So moved.
Been moved by.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Madam Auditor, get that? Okay, uh, this is also a resolution. Mr. Schultz?
Aye.
Mr. Mulbar?
Aye.
Mr. Dozart?
Aye.
And Hayden?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Resolution regarding construction evaluation on master matrix.
I make a motion to approve that.
Mr. Schultz makes motion.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Dozart. Any further discussion? Hearing none? Ms. Hayden?
Aye.
Mr. Mulbar?
Aye.
Mr. Schultz?
Aye.
Mr. Dozart?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Checking things off, actually track where I'm.
Jerry's got switch pins and starting to heat up.
Smoking, is it? We'll check these off so I can remember where I am.
Yeah.
Okay. Motion to approve appointments to commissions to assess damages, um, we're, we're short a bunch of people on this.
Are we still?
Yeah, I also was on that. I know, I, I notified Colin and he was checking on it, whether you can still be on it or not.
I was, I was my question on that one. I didn't know if that's.
Can we table this or does?
We can approve the ones that are there.
And work to fill the rest?
That's what, that'd be my suggestion. That way we have an appointed, that way I do have some appointed.
Okay. Yeah, cause this one could be very important over the next year or two.
But still, if you prove it, my name's on that board, but I. We can always remove it and get someone to replace you.
Okay.
I just don't wanna walk into any.
And I did talk to Ken Blair.
Conflicts of interest until we have a room.
Or we can just hold your name off of it until we know for sure you can be on it.
He's a city property owner. Uh, so we, we need a realtor and we need three city property owner.
Ooh, no, he's out in the country.
And, and you know, Mr. Bruce actually said to me the other day that he might be interested, or he would be interested in helping with any. So could he be a property owner? Bill Bruce?
Bill Bruce.
He said he would be interested in helping.
Okay, yeah. Right on that line. He is so close that half his house could be in and.
So we should probably check on that.
He's in the city.
Being.
He is?
He is.
So there you go.
It's an addition in the city.
Okay, alright, very good, thank you.
That's a councilman, that's why I'm gonna take his word for it.
I am on the list. Should I not vote for conflict of interest?
Well, should we remove him until we need to, until we know for sure?
Why don't you table it till the next week?
Well, that, can we, can I table that one?
Sure, we can just not.
Let's, let's table.
I hate to vote on it. It's confusing. I would be on the list, let alone, I know, not even knowing if I can be on the list.
That is correct.
Alright, let's not have any trouble.
What, we will table this one? Madam Auditor?
Table.
Move, it's been tabled. Alright, uh, approve appointments to the Board of Health, another one to have a little contention about. I'm behind a little bit here.
She's up on, cause you'll have some front signatures to make too.
Okay, this is a. Ms. Hayden, you wanna help us out with a little, little bit on the, on the issue with this one?
Um, well, it's been brought to my attention that, uh, we, they have a tax asking of, you know, last year it was five hundred and ninety-seven thousand. And by other supervisors, they were wondering what other board, uh, we approved the budget and there was a tax asking that there was not representation, uh, from the Board of Supervisors. And, uh, I understand that, you know, a few years ago, they were, they wanted to get a supervisor on that board and so, um, I've been affiliated, I've done some research on that and it does say in their bylaws that a supervisor can be on that. And, uh, proper kind of board supervisors controls who they put on the board. And so it's at the, uh, pleasure of the Board of Supervisors, uh, who they would like to appoint. It is still, it's a very important board. Um, I just feel like it would be, it's a good idea to have a seat at the table.
So Jean, what, what you're saying is that we appoint every person?
Every person on the board. There are, uh, uh, regulations and restrictions on, you have to have a doctor, there has to be a variety of, uh, at the end of the day. And I do have the, uh, their bylaws, I have.
So do we, do you appoint them on an annual basis or just?
They have three-year terms, yes, and there, there is one term coming due. It does need to be gender balanced, uh, and I would, I would still keep it gen- gender balanced, so. Um, this is a good thing to sometimes make some change.
Give me a second while you're on this now. I, I, this has been, uh, Jerry's board previously, the last four years. And, uh, so I called her yesterday to discuss it and asked the reason. Uh, there's two people listed here that we could appoint, obviously one is the supervisor, which Mr. Mulbar brought up in another meeting we were at recently. That we have a lot of trouble with boards that we're on that, or that we, that we give money to, that we actually have no voice on. And that's an extremely important thing, that we actually have a voice, where we're sitting there speaking our, our position on finances. Uh, doesn't mean we have to stifle finances, just maybe we have a better chance of keeping a, keeping a handle or lid on things if we're on the voting membership. I think that's critical. When I was told the reason that the first, the other person was, was because of a race relations thing. And I think if they wanted to appoint a liaison for that, that would probably be a better thing for liaison. I think since we're on a board, I think we should always have a vote on it. I, would everybody agree with that?
I would agree.
So I think that that's an important part to register as we're considering this. And secondly, I do believe that race relations in a community that's, you know, fif- we're at least fifty-fifty anymore and close to neighborhood they're up. And a lot of the, the, the Latino members of our community don't necessarily always speak English. So they're afraid to get their message to us and as health, with health being such an important issue, I do believe that we, we should discuss with the public health of creating a liaison. But somebody that is, actually resides close in the county would probably be more helpful. I think this person has done a great job in her services to the county over the years. But I think someone like Lorena Lopez, who actually resides here, is an active member in the community, just using her for an, as an example. If we would look, there might be other people out there that other, others of us know that might be a good choice, but I think that's important to have that liaison. But I think as far as voting goes, I think it's important that we have a board member on that. That's my opinion. Okay, is anybody else?
Mr. Mulbar? Chairman, I have a couple thoughts, uh, on that. First off, can you tell us who the current board makeup is?
Doug Sosman is the chairman, Tim Weber, uh, Libby Ranniger and, uh, Marcy Larson.
Marcy Larson. And then Patty Ritchie, which is one that is up for renewal today.
Does have a hard time making it to meetings. It's usually on a Zoom. And I think that the county prefers, it's not required, but we do prefer that the people that we swept on boards do reside in Crawford County. There's, she's been, uh, very gracious in serving and doing Zoom meeting and helping out. But, uh, uh, she does list her address as a Carol address.
Have you also talked to Doug about, or I guess Jerry passed about pointing on a Board of Supervisors member to the board? And also possibly with the liaison position?
Um.
Has that been brought up?
I, I've mentioned it to Doug that we were considering it, that, that no decision had been made and he was. It, it is at the leisure of the, uh, Board of Supervisors to make that appointment. We don't need approval from them. It says right in their bylaws that that's kind of how we, uh, do that, is we put people on that board that we believe will carry out the.
And they have to fill certain positions like we had said, gender balancing.
Right, and you have to keep a doctor on there and that's the most important position.
It, it has been brought up, just, I agree with you. I did say that at our last meeting about. It is very important to have a voting member on boards that we give money to, just to have that extra. You know?
Oversight.
Oversight, to kind of help a little bit with the voting process.
I know Eric has said, this is just plain devil's advocate, but what Eric had said in the past, typically public health has, the reason we don't put Board of Supervisors member on is keep it non-clinical. However. However. I agree.
Yeah.
That it is very important for Board of Supervisors overseeing any budget where the money goes to have a voice in that city.
And I think that that's the thing is we're the voice of the people and, and we're, we're, we are the managers of the purse training.
And we approve that budget, so, um, it's one vote, so it's not that we can sway any big decision. But I think it's important when they're going through their budgeting process to be able to put some of the thoughts in of what's going on at, at the county level, as far as the dollars and cents go. You know, and ways to, to keep the budget down and things that, uh, you know, just to have a, a voice there. And then there's always gonna be, you know, four to one possibly, uh, but.
How many year term is it?
Three years.
Three years.
Three years. And, uh, we have a list of who and when they come up next.
And if a supervisor would go off, obviously we'd have to revoke.
Right, it's on the website.
But I mean, right, so if you get appointed to a three-year term and if you would, you know, not run for Board of Supervisors, would you still be appointed for your term on the Board of Health?
Yeah.
We could still reappoint, yeah.
Yeah.
That's a good point.
That's a good point.
But then you wouldn't be on the Board of Supervisors. Then I guess the Board of Supervisors could.
I could be that.
We could redo it.
Well, I could, you could appoint me to stay, well, my three-year term isn't based on me necessarily even being a supervisor.
Correct, that's right, that's important.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Should be a good steward of the money though.
Yeah.
With that being said, I think the whole Iowa code was written when we had one public health nurse here.
Right.
And now that it's developed into something greater than that and the tax asking is, is what it is. I would make a, a motion to appoint Jean Hayden to the Crawford County Board of Health.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Jean, this is a resolution, I don't know, it's just an appointment. Moved and seconded that Jean Hayden be placed on the Board of Health. You got all that wrote down, Madam Auditor, okay?
And have to keep the, the board balance.
Balance with, yeah, when, gonna. Gender balance. So, uh, all those in favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
I'll stand.
You're abstaining, Jean abstains. Okay. Approve appointment of the, to Conservation Board. We got everybody on that. Like, I can't remember the name.
Rachel Jacobson is up for the appointment.
And she's.
For a five-year term. Yeah, there is an application on that board's. I shall move.
Mr. Mulbar makes the motion. Mr. Dozart, second. All, all in favor? Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Chair votes aye. Okay, Conservation Board. Approve appointment of, to Law Enforcement Board of Operations. He'd already said that he'd do that again or have a change.
That's one year.
That's every year. That's a year to year. Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve that appointment.
My motion is through.
Second.
Been moved by Mr. Schultz, seconded by Mr. Mulbar. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. Approve appointments. I read my.
I'd like, it's gonna break it.
I'll get the. I've been practicing at home.
Oh boy. Or never.
Approve appointments to the Region Twelve Council of Governments Policy Council.
Lawrence Simpson, Sarah Carlson.
And those are two, and both of them, okay.
Salute.
Mr. Dozart makes a motion, Jean Hayden, Mrs. Hayden. Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Those opposed, nay. Maybe we just need to get a sponge over here for a minute.
It's going softer.
Yeah, it could do.
The option rubber.
Yeah, we got it.
No, gonna get us. Sleeper in my eye.
Yeah, there you go. Approve appointments for zoning administrator. I believe that's also, is that Dwayne as well?
So move.
And motion's been made by Mr. Mulbauer, seconded by Hayden. All those in favor, or was there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Chair votes aye, motion carries. Is that better?
Thank you.
Approve the holidays for twenty twenty-three.
Where's that no thing? Not having any holidays.
You don't want any holidays.
We approved the holiday schedule as presented.
Okay, Mr. Dozak and seconded by Hayden. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. All, all opposed, I know. Approved. Approved board meeting dates for twenty twenty-three. Anybody have anything?
I'll make that motion.
As Hayden makes the motion, approved, seconded by Mr. Mulbauer. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Chair votes aye. Carry. That wasn't too long.
Let me get you a catch back up.
Ten thirty, cash, we're ahead.
There you go.
We got ahead.
Party.
Is Jack coming himself?
That's gonna be on Zoom.
This is, this is chairman, like, Dr. Fifth.
There aren't very many, Doug.
There's, there's no claims he paid or nothing, so he gave us some day off. I think it was fitting his karaoke schedule, he's rolling around karaoke now. That was the inside joke we always use to.
Well, I like to work, so heck, let's be.
It's a good days to go check out projects.
Yeah, there you go. I like that idea.
Apparently they need to remove their minimum maintenance.
To that, just after.
Somebody flew right past the tower and said, and then they did.
And did it the other day. Had they care of the road.
And I was just my hypothetical. Oh, my God, yes.
Geez, dude.
Oh, it's on the back too. That's all I asked. It is a lot. You should take an Alexa down there with you, and that way they can translate it for you. Your name must have put that together, huh? I don't know, just. He was on the, Jeremy's.
Yeah, yeah.
Terry, did they say anything about Jake? I don't know, I just asked the contact him about it, so.
How's the new Graham, baby? Awesome. Well, I haven't seen him in person yet. Said, yeah.
Thank you, ma'am.
You calling up?
All right.
It's just about right now, I'll see Jack calling and bring that back. I'm just thinking that.
Oh.
I just think if we strike Dave's name off, approve the ones that are on there as well, and work on filling them, I think it's important that we have that.
Well, we could put Kenny Blair on in base spot. Because Gene had said that he was willing.
Why don't we do that and approve it as presented and then, with that, then we can raise forward with that. Something like, look.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah, I did go and talk to him and he said.
So we got Kenny Blair to replace Dave?
Yeah, I feel comfortable with that because then we, if we find out that I can fill a spot. Is it Ken or Kenny or Kenneth?
Kenneth.
B L E I R.
I make a motion to approve the mission to assess damages with the change of striking Mulbauer, David, and put added Blair, Kevin, in the farmer's category. And then we still have three spots.
Three spots. A second to search. So, motion's been made by Schultz, seconded by Dozak. Any further discussion? Anybody else got any ideas?
The only thing I would say is just keep a, all the people.
City property owners and one realtor.
And one realtor. And who was our realtor?
I don't know if we have one for a while.
I thought Rita was. She's on there.
She's on there.
But she needed to. She's on there.
Tracy Bruce something?
Yeah, Farniel's still on there.
Tracy Bruce is on our.
She's on her, she's on a different board over.
Their floor.
Right, sorry, thanks a lot.
Yes.
Jim Brown or a realtor.
He's on there already.
He's on there, okay.
How many realtors do we currently have on that? Six. And we need seven?
Yes.
It's not just Farniel's on.
Farniel's on. What about any of the, uh, Paulies and all them?
But Tom's on there.
Tom's on there.
Tom's on there, yeah. We need more realtors, that's probably why we have a housing issue.
Did you vote on that?
Let's vote as it is, all right? So, I was just trying to come up with some names to fill them spots, give her a list. I know, like I said, Bill Bruce, we could call.
But we need to contact, those people need contacted before we.
So the motion was, strike my name.
Put Kenny Blair.
Put Kenny Blair on and then, and those three seats get to be filled, approved as is.
And the second was.
Those are, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same, I know.
That way we have some.
Chair votes aye. I don't think we'll have any of it, but you never know. And I think that'll be a very important board in the years, so to come. But, uh, at least be ready. All right, ten thirty, is, uh, Jack on?
Yeah, I gotta get her out there.
Hi, I am, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Mr. Reed is on the Zoom. HR consultant renewal agreement. Mr. Reed, the floor is yours.
All right, thank you, sir. Good morning, everybody. Morning, Jack. Sorry, sorry about any inconvenience. I'd much rather be sitting there talking to you in person, but when I heard that your county was gonna get ICE and a few others I might have to go through, I thought it was probably best that I didn't try that. And besides that, I never was very good at ice skating anyhow. So, uh, but, um, if it's all right with the chair and the board, what I was gonna do here is I just give you a kind of an overview of, uh, the services and how they all work and the service agreements and so forth, so that's okay with you folks?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Please do.
Well, my service agreement is up for renewal on July the first. Um, it, all of these, uh, all of the service agreements work the same way. They're on a three year period. At the end of the first year of that three years, there's an opt-out provision. In the event that the county was unsatisfied for any reason, you can cancel out of the agreement. I'm proud to say that I've never had a county do that with my company. We provide fifteen different service areas of HR, um, to the county. Um, we are pretty much accessible and, and take phone calls seven days a week. Not necessarily twenty-four hours a day, but if you call or email, we respond as soon as possible. And most of the time, uh, most all the time, same day. If you could, I am assuming you have the pass out I emailed. If you can look at page two, which is the listing of services, do you have that?
No.
No, we do not.
Okay, all right, well, that's okay. What I'll do is I'm just going to go down through, uh, a few of the fifteen that are on that list and I'll just talk about them and let you know exactly what they are. Uh, the fifth item on that list is investigations and research. Um, and I can, and that is kind of dovetailed with number eight on the list, which is discipline and discharge. Uh, in all of those areas that my company and myself has handled since twenty fourteen and working with Crawford County is, is that you have never had a single problem or issue come up with any of the work that we've done. And none of those issues had ended up costing the county money. Uh, number nine on this list is the work comp claims. And I will tell you that if in the HR area, there's three, there's three items that cause counties the most problems, create the most litigation lawsuit, and those are work comp claims. The reason being, because some work comp claims go long-term, what's important is, is that the county has somebody that's monitoring what's going on and where they're at at different stages. That's what my company does because that, there are times when that, uh, IMWCA will turn a work comp claim over to an attorney, an outside attorney. Uh, I stay in touch with that attorney, work with most of them anyhow, uh, and, and represent the county's interest in what's, needs to happen moving forward. There are times when you get to a work comp, uh, period where that the county has decisions that they need to make. And my job will be to let you know what the options are and what those decisions are. Because the fact of the matter is, under IMWCA, if you're not intervening, then they're just gonna keep right on going to where they want to go with it. And then you'll be left out of the equation. I've had that happen before, unfortunately. Um, number eleven on this list is employee liability is probably one of the most important items on this list from the standpoint of cost and money. And that's where that my company's in the prevention business. We work to put, um, things in place that will help protect the county from claims, litigation, and lawsuit. Let's tell you that over again, since twenty twenty-four, in all of the areas that we've worked in that you, the county, Crawford County, has never had a lawsuit or litigation they had to settle. Your insurance rate is really low, probably one of the best. That doesn't happen by accident because there's a composite that affects that. One of those things are litigations and lawsuits that the county has to settle. So I think that's a high point for the service that we provide to county, even though that it's, uh, kind of intangible in a way because you can't put a cost on it, but there's a huge cost savings there when you don't have litigations and lawsuits that you have to settle. The fourteenth item on my list here is what is, is called law changes and court rulings. And what that is, is that we have a person that monitors, uh, state and federal law changes and, and adjustments and court rulings, and we provide those to all of our counties out in bulk email information. Uh, we are actually one, one of the only service providers that do that for the counties. The last item on this list is legal advice, and it's an item that we added to the list in twenty twenty after we had started the last service agreement with Crawford County. We had, we'd put this on the list. And what that is, um, the legal counsel for my company, um, provides, when there's a need for it, provides legal advice to me that I provide, in turn, provide to the county. And that is, that's at absolutely no cost to the county. And as again, we added that in twenty twenty, uh, and it's, it's been very, very useful to the counties that we represent to be able to have, uh, free legal advice without having to go and pay a ton of money to get it done. Uh, all of those fifteen service areas, um, we have, over the years, we have provided every single one of those in some way, shape, form to Crawford County. And a lot of those are multiple times per year that we get entered into those areas that are on that list. They're, they're all for a fixed fee and there's no additional cost. We don't travel for, we don't charge for traveling mileage. Um, so what the annual fee is, 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 is all you pay. Um, the other sheet is that, uh, I'm just gonna have to read this to you, I'm sorry. But, um, the last page was, there's, I gave a monthly service fee comparison to some other counties in your area, okay? So I'll just read them off to you. Aldo Aldo and Pocahontas pays fifteen hundred dollars a month. Dickerson and Emmett pay twelve hundred and fifty dollars a month. Osceola pays nine hundred dollars a month and Manona pays seven fifty. What I'm asking for the fee from Crawford County is only six fifty. Uh, so it's the lowest of any on that list. Uh, a couple of other important figures here is, is that some of you that have been on the board for a while know that we provide you an annual summary of the services that we provided and a, and a close estimate of what the hours are that we provided during that year. In twenty twenty, our hourly rate computed for, computed out for services was twenty-five dollars and twenty-one cents an hour. Twenty-five dollars and twenty-one cents an hour was our computed out hourly rate for twenty twenty. For twenty twenty-one, the hourly rate was calculated out at nineteen dollars and thirty cents. So, the thing about these other counties and what they pay is we, we don't base our fees on what the other counties pay. I just wanted to provide you that information so you could have it. We base our fees on the services and the servicing that we've done over the last three years prior to the renewal agreement. And that's, that's how we base our fees. We, you know, don't have anything to do with what the other counties pay. And obviously, they, some of them pay twice as much as you do. But I can just say this, that I think it is fair to say that, over the years that we've been providing services to Crawford County is, is that, um, our company is, is an asset, we're valuable. We have a cost savings for the county and we're very resourceful, uh, as well. I will leave it there and I will certainly try to answer any questions that you might have.
You have any questions? Jack, I would like for you to send us a copy of everything we're reading off there, if you could.
Yes, sir.
And we, we've got that, that was kind of a nice list to go through there. Nice to be able to.
Say, Jack, Fred Dozak here, say, how big is your team? What is your team consist of?
Well, my team consists of this is, is that, um, I have a full-time associate, okay? Uh, who is, who is a lady who's had, uh, uh, a lot of years of experience in the HR area. She came on to be associate this year, through this year. Last year, she interned with the company, uh, because that she needed to get acimated from the private sector into the public sector because those are different worlds in HR. So I have her, I have, I have a, uh, an, a, an office, office assistant. And I have her, and, and then I have one other part-time person, but, um. So in my case is, is that, and, and I can tell you this compared to the other HR people out there is that I'm the only one that has a full-time HR associate. So if for some reason you don't get me, you're gonna get somebody just as qualified to do that. But I can tell you that none of the other people have a full-time associate. So I think that's, that's a downside for them because, you know, if that, for some reason, you know, I wasn't able to contact you or do the work is, I still have somebody that's gonna be there for you, okay? I hope I answered your question, sir.
Yep, thank you.
Any other questions? Well, Mr. Miller?
Something, something to think about as well. And maybe some of the reasons why you haven't had any cases is you've got somebody here that's done a damn good job for the ten years that she's been. So whether you're an expert or not, that's up to you guys. But she must, must, uh, to, to have given me that achievement and have not had those claims. Somebody did a damn good job. It's a good combination.
Very true. You, you lean on Jack a lot, I take it, and Amy? Do you lean on Jack quite a bit, I'd take it?
When we have some things that are kind of over my head and I want like, um, I guess more legal, you know? Is this appropriate, not, you know? Um, definitely lean on that.
I know even our attorney's office has used his services and, and basically double-checked with him. And so I think that, uh, Jack's, and our, our renewal's not up until the, the first of July.
With the fiscal year, yeah.
Pardon?
Correct with the fiscal year.
Yeah, yep. So, um, that's, do we have to take a vote on this?
Not today.
Not today, yeah.
I know it'd be nice to see his handouts and.
And I'd like to see your, your, have the handout come so we can go over some stuff. And, and I know that we've got a few things we're working on right at the moment, Jack, so.
I would say that.
I'd like, send me a copy as well, that's the board chair, and I need your phone number. I don't have it in my file, files anywhere. So, Kyle, did you?
I was just gonna say, Jack, you've been on since I was eight years now with the county. I believe he was one of my first actions as the board of. With the county, I believe he was one of my first actions is the board of supervisors and haven't heard any complaints. So why are we still have you around, Jack? So I really appreciate what you do for the county and working with Amy. It's a it's been a good shoe that helps us through a lot of stuff.
Thank you. Anything else?
I think for the cost, like I mentioned, it is a good combination and something to re, you can lean on when needed.
Well worth the money. I agree.
So then.
Okay.
We'll look at the handout.
Now it's a prevention with the public here every day.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Okay.
So then I guess.
Yeah, please, please.
If we know the reputation and the history of what it's been, why are we not moving forward?
Is there any way to maybe check into dealers and Cooney just to see what their services would be in that pricing?
We can do that.
I mean, just to make sure.
Our due diligence?
Yeah.
To do our due diligence for the board? I mean, what, what is the board's, the pleasure of the board? I just run the hammer.
You want to wait for the handouts and maybe we can get handouts from others including that our HR person would like to look at that.
I mean, I'd be willing to move forward today, but I mean, don't know if we got the.
So is that a motion?
Well, I would make a motion to renew, approve the renewal agreement with. But I don't know if we want. I would make that motion. I am not making it now. I would make that motion, but I don't know if the board is comfortable enough moving forward with the vote on it with the the new members and a couple that wanted to do some other research. I mean, I hate to see it.
Bring it forward.
I think that Jack's been pretty valuable to quite a different, I mean, I'd even like to solicit some information from department and that we're looking at anything else.
So I haven't heard anybody come to me and say, we gotta get, Jack's not doing a good job. I've never heard that. Everybody's appreciative of Jack. When they call upon him. But I will make that motion to approve the renewal agreement with Jack Reed.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
I just feel with Amy being the one that's in contact with him the most and she's kind of requesting that we get another option. I would like to entertain listening to that.
So you'd like to just basically hold it off until we can actually
Yes.
see what his notes and.
Yes.
Okay.
So the, the other option, the Ayers and Cooney, Cooney, are they just do the same thing that Jack does? Or do they do things a little bit different?
That's what I, I think that maybe we should roll that just because they offer, you know, a ton of services. They do our union contracts currently. And just to see what pricing would be, I mean, like I said, just kind of due diligence.
Do, do we know of any other counties that use them? I mean, Jack, how many counties do you service total?
I, I service, I service eleven counties.
Eleven.
And that, that's another aspect that I'll, I'll ask you to consider here is, is that my company is all about the quality, not the quantity. And there's only about two other people in the whole state that provide HR services to the county. And they're all about the quantity, not the quality. Because they take on all the counties that they can. And I don't do that. My company doesn't do that. We've never done that. We want to make sure, and I want to make sure that when I tell the board of supervisors what we're going to provide, we're able to do that. And that we're within our span of control. And that's the difference is the other, there are some other differences that I'll point out to you between Allers and Cooney and and the other individual is, is that I can tell you that I've never had the county leave my company when we start providing services to them. They can't say that. Matter of fact is one of those other individuals is inquired by eight or nine counties that I know of. So there, there's other things that you're going to look here at, as I told you is, is that I'm the only HR company that has a full-time associate. We are all about more about, we're not a resource. They like being a resource, which means they aren't going to do anything unless you call them. We don't do that. We're proactive and I'm in touch with different department heads and monitoring this stuff as time goes by. So there, there's quite a few differences here between what our company does and what somebody else does. I mean, they're, they, they talk a good game, but they don't play the game very well after they do that. And that's why these other counties have, have left them. How do I know that is? Because some of those counties I haven't had for a long time that had left those people that you're talking about. So there's, there's, there's a lot of differences here.
Okay. Thank you, Jack. Any further discussion? Here we have a motion on the table to retain Jack Reed as our consultant. And have a second, so. All in favor, states though by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed, nay?
Nay.
Chair votes aye. Thank you, Jack. I appreciate you being here today and thank you for, it's kind of nice to have the top dog when you're getting the information. Well, thank you, Jack.
Well, thank you all. And I, I still will get you the information that you've asked for. I'll, I'll send that off to you. And along with my contact information because the, the fact of the matter is, is that, you know, I'm available to anybody on the board as well as any department for information. You come to me directly. We're having a conference call on Thursday this week at three thirty, right, Kyle?
Yes, yes, sir.
When?
Okay. Three thirty?
Thursday.
Thursday at three thirty, right?
Thursday? Is that right, Jack? Thursday?
Yeah, I, yeah, I have Thursday at three thirty on my calendar.
Yes, sir. That's what I have.
Okay. I, thank you, folks. Appreciate it.
Right. Perfect. Okay. All right. Next is discuss with Robert Rieselman, stables for JED.
Bring them up, bring some chairs around.
Just a few minutes later. Bring the chairs on up here. Welcome and please introduce yourself to the board.
I'm, I'm Robert. This is my wife, Megan.
Hi, you're Robert.
Appreciate, appreciate you guys' time today.
This is Kyle. This is Craig. I'm Ty.
That's my sister.
Well, we'll keep him at bay here. And then Jean. Okay. Welcome.
We can start by handing out stuff for while we're here, I guess.
This is what we are proposing. This is a breakdown of what our goal is, what our mission is for our stables. Everybody knows our story. I don't think we need to count on that. This is also a copy of our strategic plan of how it is projected to help the county, not only the county, but the state as well and why we are unique. Lots of research went into this, lots of time and hours went into how to build this, what to do, where are we lacking in the state of Iowa? And maybe you guys want to look at some of the research that we found as to why we are lacking. And I talked to Jean on the phone. And we are very aware that Iowa is lacking in mental health resources. So on the bottom part here is a list of a complete complete list of different places that offer client therapy, client therapy, where their distance is compared to where we are at. And as you can see, there's not very many that do what we are looking at. We are looking at a facility that will work on loss. And initially we wanted it to just be loss of a loved one, but as we got into this, loss encompasses so much more. And all of these therapy places encompass an array of services between cognitive disabilities, mood disorders, OTPT speech, but none of them focus on primarily what we want to focus on. So I've also talked to a therapist here in town. And she said what we are proposing is ninety percent of her caseload, and that's here in Crawford County.
Even grief, you know, a divorce, loss of finances, loss of a job. Loss of a loved one is a major aspect, but there's more, there's more than just loss of a loved one. I mean, divorce rate's like fifty, almost fifty percent in the nation. There's, that's affecting a lot of people, not just loss of a loved one.
And so what we're proposing is building this facility to reach all of Crawford County, Carroll County, surrounding counties for that matter, if not statewide or multiple state wides, given the feedback that we've gotten already because there's nothing like this out there.
We already have schools reaching out that have obviously lost a student or something and they're wanting to say, hey, can we, we have sent students down to help out or to, we have students that would love this and need to be get involved. How do we get involved? Well, it's, it's not built yet, so.
It's not built. So that was, that was South Central Caveman. So that's not even our own county. That's already looking for additional help already. Some funding as to where we are at currently versus what we are looking at long-term. And this is literally within the last that we've got thrown out before we were ready to be out in public, so. This kind of shows where our current income donations are, where our cash donations are and what our, our proposed budget is for just building the facility. It's a huge breakdown of everything. But just from oh, just in cash donation before we even really opened it up, we already have thirty six thousand dollars just primarily from cash donations. The goal right now is to get to six figures because once we are at six figures, we can go to a grant writer and go after matching grants. That's where we're asking for community involvement to get to those six figures. So we have gone you guys, we've, we've done grants for Carroll County and we have also reached out to Rolling Hills and you are aware of that.
Right. And Dawn is on Zoom also. I believe she is gonna get on to Zoom today so she can also hear this presentation and. Dawn, are you there?
I don't see her.
Yes, I am here.